This is Tuesday, 5th of the United States of America and the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something addressed on the agenda should have had it to the town hall by 3 o'clock on the last Wednesday of the previous month. Anyone's wishing to speak tonight, we ask you to sign up over here on the sheet here on the table. Approval of amendments from April 5th, 2017. Donna has emailed them out to everybody on two separate occasions. Do I hear a motion for approval or amendment?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Cusson, to approve the amendments from the April 5th, 2017 Town Council meeting. All those in favor, sing if I'm being saying aye. Those opposed, so carry. Reports, council committees, Public Works, Councilman Huffman.
Yes, so springtime's a very busy time for our Public Works crew. First, they started off, of course, by removing all the plow and saw equipment, apparently we won't be needing that anymore this year. Then they moved right into, starting with picking up the yard waste. Again, as a reminder, that's the first and third Wednesday of every month. Had a lot of rain going on, they were doing a lot of mowing already. They've worked with the ball fields to roll them. They've also cut back the overhanging branches of the ball field because the kids are already using them and playing on them. They've been doing some road work, including repairing some potholes. Also, we had a damaged storm drain that they had to install road plate over. They've helped the town with the beautification day by picking up all the supplies that we used and doing some pre-work for that. They took care of turning on the Lions Park water and cleaned the pavilion for the, any rentals that will have going on. And they gave up, and appreciate they worked there last Saturday for the town's bulk trash pickup. We had a lot of residents take, partake in that and filled up about four dumpsters worth of material. So, the planning committee did not meet in April, however, the committee was forwarded the draft of the 2016 Planning Annual Report from the county, and we were requested to provide comments on the New Windsor section.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilman Huffman? While we're under Public Works, I'd like to introduce two of our Public Works employees, Wayne Myers and Dave Valentine. Thank you for all you do. The ball fields really looked great, opening day. I'll talk a little bit more about that. It was Monday, and it was something to be really proud of, so thank you for your efforts there.
Thanks.
Water and sewer, Councilman Pauls Grove.
You all saw a report from Manager Schaefer about the tank inspection at the wastewater treatment plant, and there were representatives from three different entities there, CAPPY, Mid-Atlantic, and CST, total of about five individuals that did an inspection. But it will be some time before we receive a report from that, but hopefully it's favorable and they will be able to work with us and get that situation remedied. As I shared earlier, if they don't come through, it's going to be a very expensive endeavor for us to deal with. Other than that, I believe the water and sewer systems are working as they are designed to.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for Councilman Pauls Grove? Public safety, Councilman Smith?
Thank you. Couple things kind of off of public safety, I want to thank, I'd like to thank Kalina. She put together a nice effort in the beautification. This was the first time I was actually able to make it because I was off of work, and as the mayor's wife pointed out, I'm not an outside guy. So, they gave me a little project there at the Lions Park, and I did well enough that where my wife now has said that I can start helping her in the back.
We'll give you more next year.
Yay me. Yay me. But anyhow, I felt that was a great effort. I really liked doing that. After that, I got to go down with some of the bulk trash removal, and I want to kind of piggyback on what Councilman Huffman has said, and the guys down there did a great job. People were showing up. It blew my mind, I didn't have any idea that they were dealing with that kind of stuff, and the fact that they were helping unload it and get it in the right dumpsters and keep things separated, keep the metal over one area, they did a great job. I got to spend some time down there, so I didn't have to go home and do yard work. So you guys did a great job, something to be proud of. I also, and I know the mayor's going to talk about this a little bit, I got to go to the opening day yesterday out at Seibel Fields, and that was amazing. It gave me goosebumps to watch little kids out there playing baseball. You don't see a whole lot of kids wanting to play baseball anymore, and it was pretty exciting. I really enjoyed that. It was my first experience being at Seibel Field, and you know, you guys did a great job out there as well. Those fields look great, and it's only going to get better, so. Then on to the bad news is, as everybody's aware, there was some vandalism at the playground. That is an ongoing investigation with the State Fire Marshal's Office. I'd like to thank the fire department for quick response and saving it from being even a bigger tragedy. The State Fire Marshal's Office, I'd like to thank them for their quick response. Like I said, it is an ongoing investigation. I believe one juvenile's been charged, there may be more. We'll wait and see what happens with that. Also want to thank Frank for being right on top of it to get the estimates in to figure out how we're going to fix that. Mayor and I talked a little bit at the beautification day about the possibility of putting some cameras up there, and a lot of people have reached out to me on social media asking about the possibilities of cameras. The Sheriff's Department at one time had cameras that they would lend out for a certain amount of period, a time. Corporal Townsend is off on bereavement leave, his mom passed away, so when he gets back, I'm going to get together with him on that, see if they do have some cameras that are available for us to use. And then I'd like to put it on the agenda for the work session to talk about the possibility of maybe us installing cameras ourselves. It might be worthwhile. Sometimes just the cameras alone is enough to keep people going, "Hey, you're being recorded," and maybe that kind of stuff doesn't happen. But it is an ongoing investigation, so we're not going to make too much comment on it other than the fact that, to thank those involved for making that less of a tragedy. Corporal Townsend, again, is away on leave. He was unable to prepare his monthly report with his statistics to send to me, understandably so, he's got a lot that he's dealing with, and he'll be back soon, and then we'll get called up next month. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilman Smith? Economic development, Councilwoman Schultz?
I'm working with the Carroll County Downtown Economic Development Group to update the website and update specifically the New Windsor information. So I'm going to probably be getting with Kalina to check some of that stuff out because there's a couple of things out there, I'm not sure of their status. Sort of on a related note, as you all know, the Servr store closed. I've actually been emailing back and forth with the CEO of Servr about what their plans are to go forward. Right now, they have no plans at all to reopen a local store, so that's disappointing. Not in Carroll County at all. So, we're still talking, so we'll see what she has to say about that. Not really economic development, but just in case nobody else has this on their list, I just wanted to let everybody know that the governor, Governor Hogan, is going to be in Carroll County on Thursday, May 18th for several events, but one of them is an open public meeting, which is going to be at the Community College and the Scott Auditorium, and it starts at 10:00. And whoever gets in there first gets to be there, so, just FYI.
Unless you're invited by, for mayor, so.
Yeah, well, some people are more important than others. Although they did encourage all elected officials to go, and I am planning to attend, so.
And I've requested a couple cabinet secretaries to come to New Windsor, whether that happens or not, but we'll see.
That'd be great.
Any questions or comments for Councilwoman Schultz? Community enhancement, Councilwoman Cusson?
Well, I just wanted to talk about the beautification day as well. It was a very small turnout. At the War Memorial Park, we had very efficient Girl Scouts, three Girl Scouts and their mothers, and they were very good workers, but among the rest of the town who came, I think it was probably 10 people. And so I think maybe we need to do a little bit more publicity for the event, for the carnival here, and I was thinking that perhaps it might be a nice idea to do it again right before Music on the Main, have a fall beautification day, and if we could publicize it better, maybe we could get everybody excited both about beautifying the town before everybody comes, and also for the Music on the Main event itself. So that's the main event. Also, as a member of the Legislative Committee of MML, I went to the wrap-up session of the committee. That is the lobbying branch of MML, and unfortunately, not too many bills were passed at all. And especially unfortunately, a bill important to towns like ours is the Highway User Fee Bill, which would have restored substantial monies to the towns from the user fees. That didn't even get a vote. And so, everybody, all the legislators are in favor of restoring the money, but no one wants to vote on it because they don't want to commit to having to give us money. So, we need to do a stronger lobbying effort for that next year, but you'll be happy to know, one thing that did not pass, in fact, did not get a vote, was a bill introduced that would have prevented towns from regulating in any way backyard gardens. So, didn't get a vote. Very important stuff that they were dealing with. But I hope to be on the committee again next year, and perhaps we can get push-through a little bit more, which is anything that helps small municipalities like ours.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilwoman Cusson? All right, Mayor's Report, I gave everybody an updated, an expanded, I guess, Mayor's Report. Hopefully you have that in front of you. On April 4th, Councilwoman Schultz and I met with Nick Redding from, he's the Executive Director for Preservation Maryland. We toured the Dealman Inn, and things are moving along with his group. On, let's see here, get the date here, on April 21st, he sent a team out to measure all the rooms, where all the doorways are, all the windows, and also the dimensions and measurements of the exterior. That will help with, hopefully, applications for other grants, where we can show actual footage and everything. He said today that he thinks the project of restoration of Dealman Inn would be a great candidate for their Six to Fix Program, which would allow them to work more closely with us over the next year. And that program's application period opens in July, and sites are announced at an event in October, so we have a little bit of time for that. Additionally, like I say, his team's working on the floor plans of the existing structure to aid in planning, and we, and they are doing that for free, which normally would cost about $5,000. So, things are moving a little bit, and then also on Dealman Inn, I think everybody's seen, Frank, we could probably give a little bit more update on that. The second phase of the lead paint abatement grant, is you're seeing shutters were scraped and painted, and now back on, and the roof's been painted, so it's really starting to look a lot better, even though it looked nice after the painting. On April 19th, I had a meeting with, along with Town Manager Frank and I, with Yuri Avan, who's the Research Professor, Director of Planning and Design Center, Director of PALS Program at the National Center for Smart Growth, University of Maryland, about growth, future growth issues, with the two developments coming online in the Preparatory School, Springdale Preparatory School. Don't want us to get caught off guard in three or five years, and hopefully we can start planning for that. Also, on the 21st, Jamie Ridgely, BygoneMaryland.com, went through Dealman Inn, and she's going to be doing a blog, and I think she was going to post that today, so as soon as I get a link, I will put that out for everybody. April 25th, Frank and I met with Head of School, CEO Johnny Graham, and about our mutual needs and goals, and I think we are going to see some great partnerships come out of the school coming to New Windsor. Also had a phone conversation with Maryland Planning Secretary Wendy Peters about possibility of funding a study that Yuri Avan's going to do for us, and she's looking into, they don't have funding for it, but she's going to look into other agencies and programs that might be able to help us fund that. Participated in the annual volunteer beautification day. Again, I want to thank everyone for helping that, our Public Works guys, the volunteers came out. I thought, you know, you heard Councilwoman Cusson say that she didn't think it was very good turnout. I really did think it was a good turnout, because in the past, we've been able to have 20 people from Comcast Care, and it didn't suit them this year to help with us, but we had almost 20 volunteers, and we worked extremely well together, and by 9:30, 10 o'clock, things were pretty well wrapped up. So, you know, I appreciate everybody coming out. The Girl Scouts came out at the Memorial Park, or the War Memorial, did a great job there. We had Roy Liddin and his wife and daughter do the butterfly garden, did a great job there. I think they needed more mulch, but that's a minor issue there. And then Ed had a big crew of one over in the Lions Club Park. Dave, I, Sina, and Kalina's parents were up at the Main Street Park, so.
Frank came over, he did his fair share of work.
Frank was overseeing everything, he was keeping everybody supplied. So everybody did a great job. Kalina did the organizing, so thank you again. Attended the Brother and Service Centers closing ceremony on Sunday at 4 o'clock. Councilman Pauls Grove was there. It was a very moving ceremony, a nice service, some history was talked about there, and I just, again, I guess for 73 years, the Brotherland Church has been part of this community, they're still going to be a part of this community with Warehouse and different programs that are still going to be located in the warehouse, but you know, as exciting as the school is coming here and the future that that's going to bring us, I think we should also recognize the many unknown attributes that the Brotherland Service Center brought to the town of New Windsor and throughout the world, making people's lives in third-world countries and elsewhere a little bit better, and maybe a lot better. But, and Ed, thank you for your 35?
Close.
38, 38 years at the Brotherland Service Center, so. Thank you for all you did and all that was accomplished while they were part of New Windsor. And again, they will still be a little part of New Windsor, just not as much, but still part of our community. Councilman Smith mentioned briefly Monday, the FSK Junior Eagles baseball opening ceremony. Thank you again, Public Works, for getting those fields in great shape. The Rec Council is still working on them, spearheaded by Wyatt Griffin, who's done an outstanding job getting volunteers to paint the concession stand, what was former concession stand, now it's a storage facility, but they still need a little bit more dirt to be brought in. But there was 11 sponsors. If you look at the New Windsor MD Facebook page, you'll see a picture of all these sponsors. If you know any of those sponsors, thank them for helping make the fields a little bit, a lot better. Little history on that. Don Seibel, actually after the Brotherland Service Center built the warehouse on what was a baseball field when I first started playing baseball here, we came down and played one year down on the lower field of the school at that time, which is now the fire department's property. And then Don and Bonnie Seibel saw a need for ball fields, bought a little farmette right outside of town, which is now Seibel's Fields. And I think this year is the 50th anniversary of those fields that I helped put in when I was 10 years old. So it was very meaningful to get those fields back up in good condition, and they've doubled the, probably taken your thunder away, but they've doubled the amount of baseball teams from last year. So there's four T-ball teams, and the kids loved being introduced. It was really an outstanding night for them, the parents, there was probably 100 to 150 people there, maybe if I keep talking, it'll be 200 people. But it was a great turnout, you know, a lot of enthusiasm, pitchers taken that night as well, group pictures, and they even got a few innings in, I think before the rain probably washed it out, but it's exciting to have baseball back here in New Windsor, and hopefully the program will grow, and hopefully we'll continue supporting the program, and also, I'm sure the Lions Club will be supporting the program. So, thanks to everybody that made that possible. And that's pretty much my report, unless you have some questions. Anybody have any questions or comments about my report? All right, Community Deputy, as you heard, his mother passed away, so just ask you to keep Deputy Townsend and his family in your thoughts and prayers. West Carroll Rec Council.
Mr. Mayor, I don't really have any major contributions, other than just to piggyback on what you said about the growth of the baseball program. You know, enough can't be said about the two people that run it. Wyatt is really doing a lot of work on his own to try to, you know, keep that whole program together, and actually, like you mentioned, it is doubling size from last year, so that's incredibly encouraging, and we're looking forward to maybe doubling next year with some new houses in New Windsor, so we'll keep our fingers crossed on that side.
All right, thank you. Fire Chief, Chief Tom Coe?
Good evening.
Evening.
So April was an extremely busy month for the fire department. The playground fire was mentioned, which was obviously an incident of interest to the town citizens. Year-to-date, we're up to 196 emergency medical services responses and 94 calls for fire or rescue services. This month included responses to several structure fires, including a trailer fire last night on McKinstry-Smell Road, two structure fires in Pleasant Valley, one on Richardson Road, and one on Frizzlesburg Road, and a house fire since our last meeting here out on Western Chapel Road in Westminster. Had a pretty significant accident just outside of town this past weekend. Unfortunately, two people lost their lives, but we had a very good coordination between our mutual aid companies, the Sheriff's Department and the state highway, who combined for that response. Good news is the highlight of what I like to think of town life for the year is about to come up, so the annual Fire Department Carnival will be held June 4th through the 10th on the carnival grounds, so make sure everybody's excited for funnel cakes and crab cakes and rides on the Ferris wheel. But the fire department's busy getting ready for that event that's almost a month away.
Wow.
So, that'll be here before you know it. I have nothing further to report, unless you guys have any questions.
No, but thank you for notifying me about the playground fire, and just to add on to that, there were people that stepped forward to help with the investigation, they decided to get involved, which is what you're really supposed to do, so thank you to those people that are helping out with the investigation and reporting crime when it happened.
Yes, our quick response is really related to citizens who were passing by the area that weren't afraid to say something. So, the phrase that's out there is, "If you see something, say something," really applies to lots of different things on the local level, and we're glad they made that quick call for help. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Town Manager Frank? Tab 6.
Okay, our lagoon, lagoon de commissioning project is, get ready to get started up again this spring. Constance will be on site there. We hope within the next two weeks to begin smoothing out the bottom and fine grating that so that it doesn't accumulate water. And then the other thing is Grace Fielder has begun her work on the master plan for that whole area down there, and she will be making an initial presentation at the work session in May, so in about two and a half weeks, whenever that is, and we want to make that a public participation type event, so people that are here tonight and people that you see, let them know that. So that's, this is where the groundwork for that, what that plan might look like will start to be laid. So she's moving pretty quickly in her efforts. Dealman Inn lead paintment, lead paint abatement, the mayor pretty well covered that. They've done the shutters, they've been scraped and painted, and started to be reinstalled on the building. The roof painting is underway. I think they just done a primer coat, they're working on, maybe working on the final coat. And the chimney repairs underway, right away, the first chimney that they were gonna, thought they were just going to do a little patch-up work on, they had to tear down and rebuild, but that's, that's the way it goes with this sort of thing. So it's, there is a good bit of activity going on there. I really don't have an idea when it's going to be over. They're starting on, working on rain spouts, they're working on reinforcing that roof at the back, got those pillars in place, so they're working on a lot of different things at one time, but there is a lot of activity every day. Stormwater management retrofit, really nothing new to report there. I had a meeting with the county on that, and they're still working through their review process. We're still looking at putting the dirt in the lagoon, and they have accepted the idea, at least they're working with the temporary haul road up the old New Windsor Road rather than through the community, so that's, I think that's a, that's a big, a big benefit. The Blue Ridge and College Avenue designer work, the survey crew has been working over there this week. I haven't been able to actually speak with them, but I've seen them working here in town. The Bear Sox dry pipe replacement out at the farm, we've talked about it a few times, that, that was done, they had the pipe that had the hole in the top and was collapsing, and that was done a few weeks back. Fire damage at Lions Park has been talked about quite a bit. The initial damage estimate is $8,313, which is pretty significant, but additionally to the panel that was burned, it fell down on a platform below that, and these platforms have a kind of a rubberized coating on them, and it sends you that, and also a set of steps. So all of that has to be replaced. I'm working with the insurance company, of course, they want some more pictures. What they would really like is the Farm Marshal's report, and that sounds like it's going to be a little while till it's actually, that's actually completed. I don't know how quickly they turn those out, but I've, I've already filed the request to get that report. Town does have a $500 deductible, so you know, if it stays the way it is, that's what we will have to pay towards its repair. And I guess what I'm saying is, now, I'd like to go ahead and just keep pushing on this, get the repair work in place, and we'll, you know, we'll catch up with the settlement on the insurance company later, because we wait, you know, it'll be December till we get something done. That's, that's not really what we want to do, so, if it's okay with you, I'm just going to move ahead on that.
Now, on that, Frank, are we, are you looking into just a flat board there, or session?
Yeah, we work with Playground Specialists, and their, their representative was going to see if they had a blank panel or something we could install in there. If they don't, we're going to take that panel that's on there off and make something that fits in this space. I've talked to Wendy about that previously. We did, I mean, we got a really quick turnaround on the damage estimate, we did that every weekend, and so I really haven't had a chance to get back to him and see if he has something. But you know, they might have a panel, every one of those things is, I know you won't want to hear this, every one of those things is different, so a panel may fit one place and not another. But yeah, we intend to get that off of there, because that, that in and of itself is kind of a hazard, the way, the way it is right now. Okay, bulk trash, we talked about that. I, I guess when I went down, and maybe I missed a couple dumpsters. We normally have four dumpsters full in the spring, so if we had four, that's about average. I thought it was a little bit less than that, but that, you know, it's neither here nor there. We've still got a, you know, a good bit of bulk trash in, and thanks to everyone for their efforts there. Inlet repairs. Councilman Huffman alluded to it, we have a couple of inlets in town where they are basically collapsing. One's at Sporline and Union Bridge Road, that's that big inlet there, one of the walls, and that is coming down, it's undermined, and we did put our plate over that to keep cars from having any impact on it. Unfortunately, that's the only plate we have. So we got it there, and now, now there's a second one down here at, at Main and Water Streets, right down at the bottom, and that one's, that one's also, a wall of that has collapsed, so we need to get both of these fixed in the, in the very near term. I can't find a plate for that. I can get a plate that's too big for us to move. I can't get one that's big enough for us to handle, so we'll just have to put some cones and barriers around it and go from there. But I've been in contact with Stan Balls, and particularly the one down at Main and Water. there, they're gonna kind of try to give that a higher priority as they can to get there and fix that one. So, this is, this is, this is pretty typical where we have an old system and particularly where they're bricked up like that, once water gets in behind the bricks, that's, that's all she wrote. So, that's what I have to report on. Is there anything that...
Any questions or comments? Just on the fire one more time. Wayne, I want to thank you for responding right away and securing that site so nobody fell through there. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna put on my Donna Albin hat.
Sure, go ahead.
And Donna's not, not here today this evening, so just running through, our general fund balance is $165,144. The capital fund budget is $44,000. Of course, you know, we're gonna add some money to that this year as part of our budget process, but we'll spend it right back so that, that money will probably just roll over. Our enterprise fund balance is $323,253. The three R and capital project reserve is $702,700. But as we talked before, that, that balance is gonna be down because we're gonna spend some of that on street, streetscape aspects, sewer lining and we'll be talking about that later. Loan repayment, $87,000. And Donna is going to, what Donna's actually gonna do is kind of, is rename that fund, that, that particular account and start putting our area connection charges into that so that's an identifiable location so it doesn't just get mixed in with our money. So, that, that particular fund will be kind of renamed. The money market balance is $42,580. And the lagoon remediation fund is $287,000. And of course, we'll be spending that down with the work we're doing this spring with Constance to continue to get the lagoons draining properly. Real property, there's 14 properties for sale, four properties in foreclosure. The first round of late charges will have been assessed on the water bill, as you know, you get the bill and you have about three weeks to pay it and then it goes up by $20, essentially at the beginning of the next month. So, that, that occurred. And the election is May 9th, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, 8:00 PM rather, right here. And if you're registered, bear, come out and vote.
Thank you, Frank. Lehigh update, no one's here. I know they did have an exercise with New Windsor and Union Bridge Fire Departments in the past month. A great learning experience, a great exercise to be prepared in case there is an emergency. But I thank Lehigh for working with two local fire departments. Any residents concerned, Frank? Any old business? New business? Cured-in-place sewer lining bid award.
Okay, so, we've been talking about the cured-in-place sewer lining project for a while and New Windsor requested bid from three companies that are on Carroll County's service agreements for that particular kind of work. It'll be on, the sewer lining project will take place on High and Main Streets for the limits of what is the streetscape project. And this project will repair all the sewer manholes and lines in that, in that run. This is the first phase of what would be called a true streetscape work. The lining and the manhole repairs have a minimum 50-year life expectancy. That is the specification that's in our bid documents. And as I mentioned, we requested bids from the companies that have been shortlisted by the county and we received two bids. The bid amounts were from Lane Inliner for $226,275 and Pleasant Construction for $290,300. That is considerably under what was the engineer's estimate of $487,840. And the breakdown on that is in the, further back in your packet, but the main thing is they had estimated a $75 per running foot cost and the cost for the, the companies' term came around $26 for Lane and $35 for Pleasant. So, they were both considerably under that, on that particular figure. So, so based on the review of the bids and the engineer's recommendation, Lane Inliner is the lowest responding bidder. And so, the recommendation is they award the cured-in-place sewer lining project to Lane Inliner for $226,275.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. GMB's estimate of $487, was that cured-in-place?
Yes.
Estimate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We probably don't want to go here, but I guess my question is, are there any other areas in town where we're seeing significant problems that we might be able to add on to this? And I'm not talking about doing full streets or anything like that, but while they're in town doing the work, do we have other places that we should be addressing?
Well, I mean, I, I would say yes. We know from camera work that we've done on Lambert and Hillside, for example, that there are many joint separations and there's, there's definitely infiltration in those points. So, any of the lines here in the, in the older part of town would probably benefit from, from that. I will say this, the, what we're experiencing is what I would call the instantaneous inflow. And what I mean by that is, we get a rain event, we're going along like this, we get a rain event and suddenly our, our flows go spike up like this within an hour. And then soon as the rain event clears, they go back down. That is not due to water sneaking in through the pipe tracks and things like that, although that can be, it can be an issue. That's from places where rain leaders are somehow hooked into the system, sump pumps are pumping in, other places where water is running directly into your, into your system. So, yes, if we did that, we definitely could cure some of these problems. What we really also need to find is where these, these connections are that where rain water's coming in that should not really be going into the system, it should be going out into the storm drain system. So...
But we wouldn't necessarily find that by looking at some of the other streets or anything.
We, I mean, the first thing is do, do what we've done on, we've done it on college, where you run the, run the clean, you run the jet truck through and clean the line and then you inspect it. And you can see that, you can see the separations, you can see where the roots are coming in. Where anywhere that's happening, that's a source for water, water to get in. So, if you can take care of those and, and clean them and, and put a liner in, that'll, that'll cut that out. What I'm saying is, if we do that, we're gonna get some of it, but we still want to have this instantaneous flow issue, I think, where, where things are hooked in illicitly to the system. We need to find those as we go along and make, make improvements. So, it's kind of a long-winded yes and no answer to your question. So, yes, there would be a benefit, but it wouldn't entirely get at everything.
Right, okay.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. Will you accept the bid from...
I think there's one more question.
I would like to, sorry.
There's one more question.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Usually you go for a second.
Yeah, you can just...
Yeah, I second you. Still have a question.
Now, you got a motion and second.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay.
Now, I can ask a question.
Frank, with the disparity between the bidder's price and GMB's estimate, you said the major area was the cost per linear foot. I'm, I'm then assuming that all the other requirements that they had in their spec are met by both, were met by both of these other bidders, both of these bidders?
Yes, I mean, yes, that's, there's a spec that they bid against and that they're required to meet that. If you're interested, you're asking why there's a difference between their prices?
Well, it's a, well, no, it's a huge difference between what GMB thought it was gonna cost and what these guys came in with. And I just wanna make sure that was...
I can't, I can't explain why GMB has a $75 per running foot figure there. But when you look, when you break it down, look, that's, that's, that's the difference. They just use a very much higher number. When I look at the other items on the list, they were, they were what I consider comparable. And I can tell you that as far as the two bidders, it's actually, we were, we were agreeable to two different processes. UV curing and steam hot water. Steam hot water is the longstanding technology. UV is the more recently evolving technology. Steam hot water is, is less expensive than the UV cured. And so, we, we were expecting a difference between the steam hot water and the UV. And that turned out to be pretty much right on, but that $75 per foot original number is...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Come. Do you want me to decide the...
No, go ahead. Go ahead. State your name and address. Come up to the microphone.
All right. You want me to do it now or...
Yeah.
Okay. Come on.
No, I just speak there. Name, name and address.
Oh, to the mic? Okay. Oliver Turner and I'm talking about, I live at 311 Main Street and what's going on at 313 Main Street. About your spike in stormwater when it rains? Two weeks ago when we had the heavy rain.
Does this, does this pertain to the bid? Or is this something else?
Well, the problem.
We're talking about the bid right now.
Okay, do you want to hear about the problem with the spike and the flow?
Not, not right now, just for the bid. Just on the bid. If you have a question about the companies or anything about the price...
All right.
This is the bid, this, we're talking about the bid right now.
I'll talk about it later.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the award for the cured-in-place sewer pipe lining bid to Lane Inliner LLC for $226,275. All those in favor, signify and saying aye. Those opposed? So carry. Streetscape begins.
Frank, do they indicate when they can get started?
Well, I do know that, and we'll have a meeting here, I don't know exactly when they're gonna get started. All of, all of the, the lining material is actually all manufactured, I think it's in Ohio. So, that has to get into their pipeline of manufacturing and getting in here. I'll have a better idea on that in a couple of weeks because once we get the service agreement, the next step will be getting the project scheduled. But I think, you know, these projects move pretty quickly, so, I mean, I think fairly soon.
Now, the service agreement with Arrow's fledge press, right behind that.
Yeah, so this, we, we first discussed this last month and some questions came up and so I spent some time going back and, you know, trying to follow up on the council's questions. So, one of the asked questions we asked was, is there, does the company that sells this EnviroRep have a firm that they work with or partner with that has, that does these? And I talked with White Swan, who's the EnviroRep representative, and he says they do not have a particular firm. They, in fact, they, they shy away from doing that because they want, they want to be friends with everybody. So, they don't, they don't, they don't do that. They did say that Arrow had done some of these installations, which, which we already knew. I called Spring Grove, who just went through a project to do, put in a PW Tech press. And the way it was, was with them was they're doing a large, $9 million overall plant refurbishment upgrade. And so, they did not bid this particular installation as a, as a separate item. And Arrow is their resident or on-call engineer. And so, they, they did not actually even go out to bid for the engineering for the entire project. So, I couldn't even get a sense from that, you know, how, how Arrow compared to others on pricing. But they, they are very pleased with the service and, and pricing that they've received from Arrow. So, that's, as far as the reference, that was about as, about as good as I could get there. They actually haven't pressed, haven't put the press in service yet. It's still, they're still going through their commissioning phase, so the press hasn't actually gone in, gone in service yet. I did go back and look at some of the specifics on, on the difference between what we were paying and what we might expect to pay in the future. And I went back and I did a pretty, tried to do a pretty specific estimate of what the operational costs and disposal costs with the press would be. And it's kind of unbelievable that we could essentially be looking at about $7,000 a year to process and dispose of the sludge as opposed to what we're paying now, which is close to $40,000. It's 10, it works out to be 10 cents a gallon to haul it to Westminster and dispose of it and we're hauling in excess of, right at 400,000 gallons a year. Polymer, which is something I've been asked about, using, using the standard numbers that were in the pilot study, $1,000 a year. So, I used $100 a month, which would be 1,200. Disposal cost, $78 a ton to haul sludge. Again, using the calculations, trying to project how many tons it would be, it was about 45 tons a year. So, you take 78 times 45 and I upped that number a little bit. Electricity is a, is a, kind of an unknown. The system uses a one horsepower motor to turn the press, plus there'd be some electricity involved, the controls and all that. But the main power user is a one horsepower motor to turn. I really don't know what that would use, but I added, I put in $150 a month for electricity, which I think is more than enough to run that press. The press would run 20 to 25 hours a week. So, that rounded up to 7,000. And even with that service of additional $23,000 a year, you're still at 30. So, there's, I think that we'll look at a differential of 10,000 a year on cost of sludge processing disposal, even when you consider the additional debt service. And then when that goes away, you're, you're at a, you're at a much greater savings. So, that's the background information I can develop for you since the last time. So, our recommendation would still be that we award just the engineering for this project to Arrow for $33,930.
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? I'll make that motion. We have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Pauls Grove to approve the award of the design and permitting to Arrow Engineering for $33,930.43. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signify and saying aye. Those opposed? So carry. Next page then is the Program Open Space at 201 Main Street.
Okay, so just, just recently, we received the Program Open Space Money announcement for FY 2018. Just a little background, Program Open Space Money filters from the state through the county to the towns. We get about 25% of the total amount that's allocated to the town, to the county, and then that's further broken down. Every other year, four of the towns are eligible for funding. Sometimes it works out a little unevenly because, you know, a few years ago, I think the total amount got like $8,000. And, you know, other years you get much more, it just depends on what it involved. But anyway, this FY 2018 is New Windsor's, is in this cycle. So, the total amount that's gonna be distributed to the towns is $245,546. And if you did, if you just cut it in fours, which is what's happened the last couple of years, that's about $61,000 for, for New Windsor, which is well more than anything I've seen in the time that I've, I've been here, whether it's for us or for another town. It's very high. And the way POS works is that money will pay 90% of a project and then the county pays 5% and the town pays 5%. So, just using round numbers, $100,000 project, POS would pay 90% and county would pay 5,000 and we would pay 5,000. So, it's a true, it's truly a, a great funding source for, for open space projects. So, the last time we were up, which was 2016, we received $36,214 in a POS allocation and we had put in a project that was the conversion of... and we had put in a project that was the conversion of the Atlee Totlot to a rubberized safety service like we have at Lyons. Well, that project was a $60,000 project, so we were left a little bit short on that. We were about $18,000 short when you figured in the, the $5,000 from each. And I've tried to find some other funding sources for that shortfall in the interim, and it wasn't successful. So we're back again. What I would like to do is take part of this money we get this year to supplement that original allocation, so we have enough to do that project and move ahead with that. And then whatever is left, I would like to work up a project for 201 Main Street. We now own that lot, and we can start thinking about that as a, as a, as a park. Now, I know, I don't want to jump ahead too far and start spending money that we may not, you know, then, and then, you know, take it out and put it back or something. What we need to do in this first phase is submit a project to secure our allocation. We can refine that later, so that's, that's what we want to do. We want to get an initial project in with some reasonable design and scope to it, and then, you know, as time goes by, not, not for centuries of time, but, you know, some time, we can spend a little time to look at it. But we have to make our submittal to the county by May 19th, so we don't have time to sit around and, and pick in a whole lot of ideas.
If, if we were to build a $43,000 gazebo, then, or design that, could we then alter...
Yes.
So that we would have more time to come up with a...
My idea was just, you know, put in a, something, a gazebo, a patio or paved area, some lighting, and make a project that you would be able then to tailor to, to what you specifically want when you have a little more time. This is not, this is not cheating, this is, this is the way it always works. You come in with your project, and then, once you get your allocation, you refine that project a little more as, as you go through the next phase.
So would it be better to have, like, several different things on there, like you said, lighting, pathway, gazebo, instead of just like one thing?
That's one, yeah. And the reason for that is, later then, when they start, when you start being examined, you can say, well, is that in your original scope? Well, yes, lighting was in your original scope.
Got you.
Or seating areas were in our original scope, or landscaping was in our original scope. It may not be in your final scope, but if it's in your original scope, it makes it much easier as you move forward to your final project.
Cut things out. So everybody in favor of giving Frank direction?
So Frank, I would, yeah, I am in favor, however, I would maybe add something along the lines also of a, of a restroom type of thing, because I'm a little concerned about putting a permanent structure in that area, such as a gazebo, that may interfere with other plans for an open kind of lot that we may have. I don't know where we'll go, but I figure if we throw in a restroom kind of thing, it would give us more...
Well, absolutely, and I understand entirely exactly. You don't want to build a structure right in the middle of it, then it kind of...
Then we can't use it.
Yeah, I'd rather see it open, but I think if you submit several, like you said, several different things, and it's, if it's in the scope, you know, if you say restroom, and you say lighting, I mean, that lighting could reflect anything, pathway, or, you know, patio area could reflect anything, and it gives you a little bit more leeway in what you're allowed to, it gives the scope a, a bigger definition, so, yeah, I mean, I like that idea as well.
The way it works is, you, this goes, this goes to the MML, the local chapter of the MML, and the mayors, I don't know how, how they really do it, but it's, it's a local decision about how they distribute the money. And that's fairly rapid. Then you have to go through DNR, and that's a longer process, and it actually goes, puts its way all the way up to the State Board of Public Works for approval, and you have to have fairly good pricing and justifications and description of the project when you go to that level. But at that point, you know, we can take some months and really think about how you, how you want to do that.
And we talked about the bathroom, because there's water and sewer there, and it'd be great for musical on the main or any other activities, or just any event. So we need, do we need, I guess we need a motion? Everybody good with giving Frank direction?
I think it's just direction, come on, opposed.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Now, Mr. Turner, you'd like to address something?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, Oliver Turner, I live at 311 Main Street, and this pertains to what's going on at my uphill neighbor's house at 313, which affects me. That rain we had about two weeks ago, there was enough hydraulic pressure on his front wall to make it squirt through the pores of the cinder block, the bottom course, not through the, the mortar seams or the crack, but the bottom course of cinder block, right next to the floor. The stream of water coming down his floor, and I went in and looked at it, was about that wide, and it went straight to the floor drain, which accounts for some of your spike down at the sewage treatment plant. But in the past, he showed it to me in the past, and it's only been a trickle. This time, though, it was substantial. So there's, and I went over there and measured, after he told me about it, and I thought about it, and I went over there a couple nights ago and measured, it's at least six feet below the road, the level of the road, accounting for the height of the wall up front. And I think this is significant. That section of wall caved in in front of his house, at the same time it did in front of Councilman Custance, and was replaced by the state at the same time. The water is, there's a monitoring well uphill on the other side, the evenside. You draw a diagonal line on a Google Earth picture down to the storm drain you're talking about that's caving in down there at Union Bridge and, and Sporlan, and that line intersects the right front corner of his house where this water's coming in. And it's also, that line intersects the right rear corner of my house. I had a wet basement up until about three or four years ago, when I got Frank Haynes to replace, patch the sidewalk where it was, the wall was breaking it up in front of my house. Now it's starting to get damp again. But right now, it's coming under that new section of wall, like I said, at least six feet down, and coming in the front of his house. It's, and I called Meredith Ledoux, I don't know if she's contacted you or not, and told her about this, the project manager. This is uncaught stormed stormwater, and the only time it happens is when it rains, and it has to be a relatively hard rain. If it's a two or three day soaker, then he's got water coming in under the sidewall of his house. But it has to be a two or three day rain, and I think I know what's going on with that too. But that's another issue. Right now, I want to talk about this, because I believe, like your storm drains are caving in, his front wall is about to cave in. The fact that it's coming through the pores of the cinder block, not through the mortar joints, it's weeping through, there's a lot of pressure behind it. And it's kind of like a waterfall down on the floor of the basement, so, just to put you on board.
Okay.
And I know it's coming from the state road. It, it has to be. It's, what's coming down the sidewalk goes right on by and goes over toward the Lomans at 309 and 311. But this past storm, I stood out there and watched it that night to see where it was all going. I didn't see any going over to his house, 313. And this was before he told me about it. You know, I was watching it come all the way down from Brownie, and I know you drilled a hole in the curb over there to try to bleed off some of it. I think you need to, the new curb in front of Cotherman's?
We didn't...
You didn't do that? Did the state do that?
I don't know if we did.
Okay, well, somebody, after they put that new section extending the wall, tapering it down into a curb, somebody drilled a hole in it diagonally over to the state road to drain off some of the sidewalk stuff. It's not big enough. It's only about maybe an inch, it needs to be about three or four inches to really drain it off. But anyhow, wherever it's coming from, it's stormwater.
So you, you've contacted State Highway?
Yes, I did.
All right, we'll, we'll follow up with them then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Again, election, town election is May 9th, Tuesday, next Tuesday, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, right here in this building. We encourage every registered voter to come out and vote. Memorial Day service will be Sunday, May 28th, at 6:00 in the evening at the Presbyterian Church. New Windsor Fireman's Annual Carnival, June 4th through the 10th. The annual parade is June the 6th, Wednesday evening, 7:00 PM sharp. And Springdale Preparatory School Open House will be on May 18th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at 500 Main Street. Any other announcements I might be missing?
We're going to need to reschedule our June...
Yeah, I think we've already rescheduled for the 2nd to 14th.
The 3rd is actually the 7th.
7th?
So we're having the council meeting on the 14th?
Yeah, okay, 14th. Tommy said 4th through the 10th, okay. Yep. Be June 7th is the parade.
So you're only having one meeting in June?
Most likely we'll have one when, when we do something like that, where you only have one combined them.
Especially since they're two days apart.
Any other announcements?
Do we have a music on the main meeting this month?
I don't see one. We had one in April, and it was just two of us there, so, but I think possibly June, we start having them every month.
So we have it on June 8th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Pierce, you have any words?
Do I have any words?
You have any words about your history here?
I have no words.
No words? Okay. Give you the opportunity.
Make that down. Mr. Pierce is speechless.
All right. Do I, yes?
Who said Memorial Day service is when again?
Sunday, May 28th, at 6:00 PM, at the Presbyterian Church Yard. And I'm still waiting to hear from Lieutenant Governor Boyd, whether or not, Lieutenant, yeah, Lieutenant Governor Boyd Rutherford, whether or not he will be our keynote speaker. So I'm hoping to hear something by the end of next week, because it'll soon be around. Do I hear a motion for a German?
So moved.
All those in favor, signify, we're saying aye. Opposed? So carry. Thank you. One hour.
That's very good.